It's just, it's thinking really hard.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time. And I understand.
It's on, it's on summer, it's on summer mode.
Yeah, so we can, if it says four o'clock, oh, one minute. Yeah, let's just start and.
Not too bad.
I'll just do things over here.
You got a log in?
I got nothing.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know, I can't even get into my.
Good eve, no, you're good. Good evening and welcome to the Waterloo City Council's, uh, work, no.
Work session.
Work session, holy cow. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols. Ms.
Here.
Oh, hello, Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs. And Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Ms. Wilder. And Ms. Poise.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Potem.
Mr. Greider.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. First up, we have an update from Grow Cedar Valley. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us today. Mike Malero, CEO of VGM Group, Waterloo, Iowa. Hopefully you've heard of us. We are, I'm representing Grow Cedar Valley, which I'm chairman of this year. And, uh, just before I introduce our team and bring them up here to tell you all the good things that are going on, we greatly appreciate the alignment and the partnership with the city. We are the, uh, organization representing the economic engine of, of the Cedar Valley, um, businesses and institutions and doing a lot of great work to, uh, grow the business community, attract people in, um, make it, uh, easier to hire people, retain people, and, uh, quality of life around the community. So with that, let me turn it over to our executive director, Carrie Dara.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Good afternoon, Lisa Schubel, VP of Economic Development. It's good to see you all today and virtually as well. We appreciate your collaboration with us, as Mike said, and we see continued growth, including from our existing businesses. I just wanted to take a moment before I get started to include or acknowledge a celebration of completion of Crystal Cold's new hundred thousand square foot freezer and cooler warehouse, uh, building that the community and the business and the EPA will be celebrating this coming Thursday. This is another great example of private-public partnership between the city and the company to redevelop a brand-filled area. So congratulations to the planning staff, Adrian's here, and the city council for helping make that, uh, happen and working with Tom Poe and EPA. This afternoon, I want to talk about the activity we've seen since our last update in November and what we have for promoting Waterloo over the next, uh, the coming months. Grow Cedar Valley has realized six new project leads since November. Even though we have thirty-one active projects, we see more aggressive timetables for physical expansion by some of these. Two of those leads have visited Waterloo in the past six months. One of those leads visited Waterloo a week after we sent the initial site proposal. That's how fast some of these projects are moving with their decision-making process. The company will make a location decision by the end of the summer, and I'm glad that, uh, able to say that Waterloo, uh, made their shorter list. Having the real estate ready is to go is key, and Waterloo has three industrial parks that do exactly that. From the six new projects, four new lead opportunities were generated from, uh, Grow Cedar Valley's, uh, domestic marketing outreach from November through March. Some of tho- those lead opportunities will transition from the initial virtual visit to in-person visits at the company's location. And I'll get into that in a moment. The leads over the last six months have been predominantly durable-good and non-durable-good manufacturing companies. Some of these projects are led by consultants and others by companies. We see about a half-half mix of leads from a company or consultants, or consultants. Uh, those relationships with site selection consultants are important to us for that reason. In April, we attended the Site Selection Guild Annual Conference, where, where we were able to start and reestablish relationships with about twenty-six consultants during the two-day event. Last month, and it's not in your notes, we attended the Select USA Annual Conference in Washington DC. We had been going to this annual conference pre-pandemic, and we put a pause and it didn't occur for a couple of years, once vers- virtually and last year in person. Uh, this past May, it was largest attendance ever. So we see that international companies are wanting to come back to the table and discuss, uh, foreign direct investment in the United States. This is an annual event ho- uh, hosted by, uh, the U.S. Department of Commerce. Grow Cedar Valley, uh, marked, marketed Waterloo and the Cedar Valley under the State of Iowa booth. Four total of seven soft leads and one active project were identified at the state booth. Well, we were able to, uh, identify and have an additional three meetings with expanding international companies while at that show. That was in addition to, uh, the leads generated at the booth. Mayor Hart also attended the summit and was able to participate in some of those individual meetings. And I feel, based on his feedback, we will be seeing him, uh, attend next year as well. The week of June nineteenth, which is just around the corner, I will be making in-person visits with companies in the Chicagoland area. We have three appointments scheduled so far. We hope to include the visits with two of the companies we identified through GCV's lead generation earlier this year. Appointment setting is currently being conducted, and we will finalize the trip schedule on Friday. In August, we are registered to participate in the Site Selection Guild's virtual table talk. That is an event that pairs economic developers with seven different consultants from around the world in fifteen-minute increments over two hours. Kind of liken it to speed dating, but for economic developers and consultants. It's a chance to present our community and ask questions on the latest market conditions the consultants are seeing. The market information helps us understand the company's decision-making right now, but also helps us focus on industry sectors that are experiencing more growth than others. With any of these initiatives, I am happy to get in the weeds with any one of you. If you want to grab a cup of coffee, just let me know. Uh, we can take questions at the end. Uh, having said that, I'll turn the mic over to Stephanie, who will give you an update on talent attraction and retention initiatives. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Stephanie Dot Wyler, um, workforce solutions coordinator for Grow Cedar Valley. Um, I just want to talk about a couple of things that we've been working on, um, for workforce recruitment and retention in the area. Um, I do have something I'm going to pass around to you guys. So what is being passed around is our wage and benefit survey. So Grow Cedar Valley, in partnership with our Cedar Valley regional partners, um, we worked with you and I to conduct a wage and benefit survey for 2023. Um, we previously did it in 2021, and it was really well-received from our HR professionals and businesses, um, really just to get an idea of what in the area people are paying, um, to help them be more competitive, um, help attract and retain more workforce in regards to wages and benefits. So this is the executive summary of that. You don't have to look through it right now if you don't want to, but it's for you to have. Um, and we also provided it to all the businesses who did participate. Uh, we sent it out to about four hundred businesses in the whole, um, Cedar Valley region and got a hundred and twenty-eight responses. So all different industry sectors, but, um, we look at this as a great tool for our businesses to know, um, about pay and to be competitive. Our plan is going forward to do that on an annual basis, um, and again, in partnership with Cedar Valley Regional Partners. So this is a really good, good tool for our companies. Um, so that's been one of the focuses. Um, the other one is, I think I mentioned the last council meeting, that I put together a workforce advisory committee that really helps guide my work, um, and my role. We have six, um, HR professionals on that committee at this time. Um, I am looking to expand that this next year. But really what, um, the committee determined for us to work on first was to get an idea of why people are leaving the Cedar Valley. Um, and so to do that, we kind of came up with a creative idea in creating a survey. Um, it was called the Cedar Valley Retention Survey. I don't know if you saw that around social media, dot all or in our extra. Um, but basically, we wanted to get an idea of the people that currently live here, why would they leave the Cedar Valley? Like, what would take them away from the Cedar Valley in order for us to help kind of work on what we can do to keep them from leaving? So with that survey, the results that I think are the most interesting that we're going to do something with are basically the top three reasons why people would leave the Cedar Valley is number one is weather, which I don't think is a surprise to any of us, and, uh, we can't do anything with that, unfortunately. Um, the second one was job opportunities, and the third one was entertainment and things to do in the area. So, um, that's something that Nicole, who's Director of Communications, and I really have been talking a lot about, um, and are focusing a lot of our efforts in 2024 on Live the Valley, um, which is a site that we have, and, um, along with that, just so much more. It's just a huge campaign that I'm going to let Nicole, um, expand on. But that's really kind of what this, my committee is focusing on, is like, how do we promote life in the Cedar Valley better for people that currently live here, also people that maybe are looking to relocate here? So how do we give them the tools to show, like, what things there are to do? And then also, like, maybe even creating events for us to, um, connect people with other residents? So that's really been my focus the last couple of months, or the last, um, six months since we met. And, um, you know, we'll continue to do that, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Nicole Salas, and I am the Director of Communications, uh, for Grow Cedar Valley. And what we're going to talk about today is place-making. Uh, that's really what we're focusing on, uh, like Stephanie mentioned. Uh, we are really focusing in and putting a lot of effort into our Live the Valley initiative. Live the Valley is really focusing on, like, the lifestyle aspects and what it is like to live, work, and what we like to say grow in the Cedar Valley. Um, so two initiatives that we have currently, uh, we have one that we are collaborating with, um, Experience Waterloo for the My Waterloo Days Festival. Um, we've actually had the opportunity to work with Mayor Hart, so we thank him for his support, um, in this project. So we are doing a collaborative mural. So we're setting up, uh, unique, um, selfie booths that are going to be at the My Waterloo's Days Festival. The primary focus is really brand awareness. One of our biggest target markets is our local tourism. So when people are coming into the Cedar Valley, we want to make sure that they understand, um, and have some context on what it's like to live here, and that's what we're looking for at Live the Valley as a website, to be a destination for those people. So in order to bring them to our website, we are engaging them with unique projects like this one. Um, they will be able to take pictures, and with those pictures, we are going to, um, we're going to, um, uh, compile them into a photo mosaic mural that's going to be presented on the Experience Waterloo building. So we're really excited about that. Uh, we have an artist, uh, Paco, actually, you guys are extremely familiar because we're seeing a lot of his art in the building. Uh, but he's going to come and paint live, um, on Saturday from twelve to three. So we're really excited about this activation and really putting, uh, Live the Valley in the forefront so people understand what it's like to live in the Cedar Valley. Um, the second thing that we're working on is an influencer campaign. The influencer campaign is directly connected to digital marketing, but also, like Stephanie talked about, one of the biggest things, um, that people are focused on when it comes to moving to this community or staying is what is there to do? So we are using our influencers as a testimonial on steroids. We are sending them to different, unique experiences so that we can show what the Cedar Valley has to offer from a variety of perspectives, whether that's wellness experiences, art experiences, creative, um, music experiences, so that we can make sure that we're putting things to do, um, in the forefront of the Live the Valley campaign. So that's what we've been working on. There are two big, uh, campaigns that we're pushing out here within the next four to six weeks, and one will start on Friday and Saturday of this weekend. So I'm hoping that all of you will join us, take a selfie, and make sure that you're a part of that, uh, photo mosaic mural that will live in our community for quite some time and promote Live the Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, I'd wrap it up. I'm Carrie Dara, uh, executive direct, executive director, president and CEO of Grow Cedar Valley. Um, I will speak briefly about TechWorks, the TechWorks campus first. Um, and just to let you know that, um, by the end of the summer, all the floors will be fully renovated in the Tech One building. As you know, the top three floors are sold to Lincoln Savings Bank, and they're in process of renovating the third, or excuse me, the fourth floor, which will be complete, um, shortly. And then we have Hawkeye Community College, as you know, renovating the second floor for their automation and robotics training center. So, um, that is a project, as you know, uh, many of you have been around, um, a long time and know that that project's been in the works since two thousand and seven. Um, so this is a really great milestone to say that the building will be fully renovated. Maybe not fully leased up, we have a couple of labs yet, but the building itself will be fully renovated. Also, you, uh, know that we transferred the outlots that were on the TechWorks campus to the City of Waterloo. Um, and so we've been working with Noel and with WDC and others about the uses for those outlots and how they can contribute to the art-existing renovations, projects, businesses going on in that campus. And then finally, about TechWorks, other than there's a lot of information in the packet, we have the John Deere Tractor and Engine Museum, as you know, on the west side of the A Building, which in Deere nomenclature is the A Building. On the third, or on the east side of the A Building, a third of that building is coming down. So Deere is removing, uh, the end of that building that's closest to the Tech One building and creating, uh, green space, gathering space. It's absolutely, we've seen, um, images and renderings of what that space will look like, and it's absolutely beautiful, as you can only imagine, lots of places for people to gather and sit, and, um, it just really will clean up that site a lot, too. So thanks to Deere, once again, uh, for doing work on the TechWorks campus. And then finally, I'll just wrap it up with, um, the Grow Cedar Valley wrap-up. And as you could see, um, we still are prioritizing the same priorities that we've had since we did our strategic planning a few years ago. So it's workforce and place-making, which can't help but go together. Um, then we're existing business help and growth and making sure that we help our businesses diversify and really, um, be able to grow in what may be a new economy for them. So that's a high priority. And then internally, uh, continuing to make sure that Grow Cedar Valley is a sustainable organization and that we're hiring the right people and the people and the talent to help us execute our goals. And as you could hear from the reports that you heard from Stephanie, Lisa, and, um, Nicole, we have many other team members who aren't here today, but we do have the right people and the right seat on the bus, so to speak, um, getting a lot of really good work done. So again, you've got a lot more information in your packets. It was suggested to us, uh, last week that maybe we come to you in addition to the comprehensive packet with all of this information, but a one-sheet executive summary, too, so that, um, you could just get an overview, a quick overview, and then at your leisure, take a look at the full packet. Um, so we'll be doing that moving forward, too, so. At this time, any questions at all, um, for me or anyone else on the team? I think we've got some extra time.
Counsel, any questions?
Hopefully you're excited about this Live the Valley activation because, um, we're all really excited about it, and they've worked really, really hard and collaborated significantly with a lot of other stakeholders in the community , um, to make sure that this activation is pretty successful.
Mr. Mayor Potem.
Uh, Mr. Greider.
So I just want to say thank you. One of the big things we know is that young folks are leaving, um, and it's, it's not just a Waterloo problem. It's a, it's an Iowa problem.
Right.
Um, but I'm very excited, um, that, that you all are working on this issue. Um, and I know that there will be room for us to collaborate on, on lots of these various issues, but I'm very excited to see that we're all recognizing the challenge we face and, and working together on that. So thank you and your team so much for, for that, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you done, Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Mr. Bozen?
I just had a, a quick question. When you, when you said our packet, are you talking about the ten-slide PowerPoint presentation or a different packet?
You were sent a packet last week, or, I mean, a, a compilation of.
It's what's uploaded.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what format you received it in, but we sent it last Wednesday, so it included in your council packets.
Okay.
Yep, and that's what's included in your council packet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
If you need it ever in a different format.
No, 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 I just thought maybe you might have had additional information besides the ten slides.
No.
Okay, thank you.
As Lisa said, any of those that pique your interest and you'd like additional information or really drill down, um, that's what we're here for.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right.
Going a second time, all right.
We will be back anytime you need us to, otherwise we'll schedule time, um, in six months for our next update.
Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation on nutrient reduction study.
I don't know if there's, the heart part, a lot of those leaderships. They've occasionally had school folks, but it was, folks would work down the ESE, the admin office rather than.
In the building.
Yeah, like that.
It'd be nice to get someone involved because Cedar Falls schools is here, and so it's Cedar Falls, but not Waterloo.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Brian Bowman, I'm Operations Director at Waste Management Services, your provider for wastewater. So this, uh, this afternoon, we're going to have a quick presentation on nutrient reduction. He's sharing it for everybody, and put me on page one. There we go, so. Okay. The goals of this presentation are, are to give you guys an update on, on some of the status of, uh, of the DNR nutrient reduction plan, which is required by our, uh, our MPDS permit. Um, the ultimate takeaway on this is we need to increase capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. So a little bit history on our plants. We have two facilities. They were constructed in the nineteen nineties, so, yeah, they're getting up there in age. Um, the satellite facility, which basically treats all the wastewater from the industrial base, which is basically Tyson effluent and the tannery, uh, was mothballed in two thousand and twelve. The reason for that is it was really expensive to run, and we also had, um, some issues with juggling two biologies, right? Um, so now we're running one facility, and that is the Easton Facility. And, uh, in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, a major planning effort was undertaken in conjunction with the DNR, um, which required the first round of the nutrient reduction study. Um, during that first, uh, nutrient reduction strategy, uh, the, there was like a phased approach uh, for upgrades that was recommended on that. Ultimately, the solution to some of our issues, not only with, with capacity and nutrient reduction, is, is to take those two plants and combine them into one biology. Um, that's, that price tag was about a hundred million, a hundred and one million in three phases. And feel free to interrupt me as we go. I know you guys were, were provided like a packet, the nutrient reduction packet. I bet you all took a lot of time to read that. It's, it's very complex in nature, and I bet you enjoyed it. So the phased implementation of the recommended plan, you can kind of read for yourself, the near-term, near-term cost was fifty-five point three million dollars, and that, that would, that would address the nutrient, uh, removal and immediate needs midterm, which is two twenty-three to two twenty-eight. That, that takes into account, uh, equipment replacement, and then long-term, as we're looking really down, down the road, we're talking about increasing the hydraulic capacity. Currently, right now, our hydraulic capacity is about forty-six million gallons out of our effluent, so that would address that. So we identified how many dollars in two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and nineteen and twenty-two, we did do a, a pretty good-sized project, which was the BioSolids project. I'll be coming to the council with a work session on the completion of that. Uh, Woodruff is near-complete on that, we're about ninety-eight percent done, and I, I definitely want to come to you guys and show you, uh, you know, show you the, the PowerPoint presentation on that. So there's eighty-three million dollars still remaining, um, to be spent in two thousand and eighteen dollars. So going to the required two thousand twenty-three nutrient, uh, study, which is required again, we revisited that two thousand and eighteen document. Um, similar, um, analysis and cost, or similar analysis was, was, was the take-home thing. Costs were updated, so the take-home points again is that ultimately we need to increase the capacity at the, at the treatment, uh, facility. And this was a great end with, uh, lead-in with Grow Cedar Valley. You know, they're talking about all these prospects every, seems like once a month, we're, I'm getting contacted by Lisa Schubel saying, can we take these people? You know, and as a community, we got to be mindful that, that we're prepared for the future. Um, these, these industrial clients that are coming are, are, are asking, uh, to relocate, possibly build in Waterloo, and I think it's beneficial for us to be prepared as we're going down the road. So the lowest, lowest-cost plan is still to combine the plants while achieving the nutrient reduction that is going to be required by the DNR. Um, total cost for that is ninety-four million dollars, and the next phase is to increase the capacity while just removing the nitrate, so that ninety-four million dollars takes into account the hydraulic capacities and stuff like that. The timing is becoming critical as the next phase will take about five years to provide that needed capacity. You got two years of design, two years of construction, okay? So we're, we're starting to prepare for the future here. Now we're talking about the financial impact, and I know that if, if needed, um, we could talk to Bridget on this. This is, this is the impact. Uh, the first slide is called Financial Impact Number One. This is, this is what the rate increases would be required to, to fund the, this project, which is the nutrient reduction, okay? The next one is what I like to call, um, worst-case scenario. Say our industrial base cut back their, cut back their water usage thirty percent, which in turn would affect the wastewater process. That is the, um, the rate increases that would be necessary for that. Okay?
Mr. Mayor Potem.
Mr. Bozen.
Just, just a quick question, Brian.
Yep.
And you said that two, yeah, we were working on two thousand and eighteen, eighty, eighty-three million. You were, you were talking about there was some money left over from the, the original start.
I don't understand your question, Dave.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
How much money do we, do we have right now to, to work with before we raise rates?
I guess, yeah, come on in.
Okay. So I, I guess to kind of just take a step back. Right now, this is actually just a, the study as far as what it would take to try to implement this. So when he's talking about the rate increases, um, that's taken into account not just the nutrient reduction plan, which is part of the requirement, but it's also taken in, um, you know, currently, we're getting ready to work on Titus Lift Station and Cattle Congress, and, um, we also have future projects, East and West Interceptor. Um, there, there's a whole, let me, of lift stations and other improvements that we need to take into account. So when we're actually showing this, that's actually what, um, is encompassing all of those things. So, and I, one of the biggest things I want to make sure that everyone takes away from this when you start looking at those numbers is that is as if it happened as of right now. Okay? So I do want to point out some positive things that unfortunately, why we have to do this studying, we need to submit this now. We do have some positive things that are in the works, just to, to kind of give you guys some updates. Um, the City of Waterloo, um, the mayor received a, a letter from SRF back on May twenty-ninth that we're actually, um, qualified for loan forgiveness. Um, it was for one of our CIP projects, um, which, uh, we got eighty percent of that loan forgiveness, um, which that project was just a little over a million dollars. And so we'll have a little over eight hundred thousand that we're going to do. The reason we did not take that off of that yet, um, yet is the fact that the paperwork's not all done. So until we actually have everything done, even though we have it from the SRF that was given to the mayor, until that actually takes place, we don't necessarily want it to subtract that. Um, we also have our BioSolids, or not our BioSolids, but our, um, Biogas project that we're working on. So, um, So where we're at right now, we've narrowed that down to three, three finalists and we're in the process of reviewing that now. That's also looking pretty favorable for us. But once again, we don't have anything that's signed, you know, that we actually have a contract. So part of our long-term planning that's kind of shown within some of these rates is the improvement that needs to take place at the lagoon and the, and the cleaning of it and that, and so on and so forth. So.
But what I was getting at when I asked Brian about the 83 million, it's on the one slide, he says 83 million is still remaining to be spent of $2,018.
That was to $2,018.
So in other words, those are still, that's still the amount of money that we needed to spend. Do we actually have 83 million? No, we don't.
Okay.
So what, what we've done is it's, it's in phases because we do, do, we do go out for loans to do that. That's part of the SRF that we end up doing that. But unfortunately, just with inflation on how much it's increased, that's why when you look at these percentages, it's so much higher. But there's so many moving parts into this that make it very difficult. So when we're doing that. And that's why I don't really want to get, and especially for the courier, because I want to make sure that people don't think this is actually what we're going to end up doing. Because like I said, we already have an SRF that's going to be taking part of it. We have our other projects. We're not, we haven't gone out for any grants yet, you know, because like I said, we're just getting ready to move forward with this. But we are obligated to submit this plan to the DNR. So by doing that, we have to show what it, as of right now, if we got nothing else, this is actually what it would end up being.
Okay.
So that's why I want to make sure very clear to you that not to get too carried away on just that part yet.
These, these numbers are, are, are going to lower.
Yes.
Based on signed documents and, and grants and.
Correct.
Things you've got.
And opportunities. And like I said, this is our goal. And like Brian said, you know, we, we need to do this. We have aging infrastructure. We have to be planning for future growth. So all this stuff is, it's, it's something that we need to do. We just need to make sure that we're trying to plan accordingly. But this would be to encompass all the other projects which we have as well too, not just this plan. But that's, that's part of the requirements when we have to submit it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Sorry for the interruption.
Nope, you're good.
And Randy, you already kind of spoke about some of this, you know, what, what is our plan for some of the financial impacts here coming up, you know? Well, obviously we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try to seek some grants. The grants are out there. We need to harness Strand and Associates, Strand Associates to seek grants for infrastructure projects. Seek no interest loans with SRF for design, the design portion of it as we move forward. You know, and then there's variables and unknowns that we, Randy already, or Mr. Bennett already talked about, that exist today with future revenues that may offset future rate increases. So requested counsel action now gets down to the meat and the bones. At the next council meeting, I will be having a resolution for counsel to approve the nutrient reduction plan. That needs to be submitted to the state. It was actually due June 1st. We did submit the draft portion to them and I had a conversation with the DNR. They understand that we had some financials to figure out before we made the financial statements. So they are good with that. In the interim, we, like I said, we are running over capacity right now. So I know even on tonight's council, there's some, there's some requested actions in, in finances to provide answers, finances to restart up the satellite, which, which isn't going to be a lot of money, but it is going to be some funds. Okay? And then our goal is obviously to begin the next phase. And it is a goal, mind you, to begin design in July 2024. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, what time?
Yes.
What are we looking at ballpark from taking our capacity from and what are we hoping at the end of this process to be able to handle with all of the investments that we're potentially making for this project?
Right. And I'd have to review my notes specifically because when you're talking about design, you're talking about pollutants like BOD and TSS and nitrogen, right? So basically what you'd be doing is taking all the design into one, regardless of where the collection system is. Okay? It would significantly increase our BOD capacity and TKN capacity for both facilities. And I can certainly get those numbers for you. I could turn around and get them for you now if you're interested.
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think, for us and everyone.
Unless you got them, Brandon. Yep. So by, by doing this, we would take, again, operated at the one, one plant, we would increase, increase our BOD from 30,000 pounds a day up to 88,000 pounds a day. Okay? And your TKN would go from roughly about, from 7,500 pounds per day up to near 20,500. That's my quick math in my head.
Mr. Mayor, what time?
Are you done, Mr. Greider?
Yeah, that's just, I just wanted to.
Mr. Nichols?
Hey, Brian, could you explain the acronyms you're using?
Sure. I'm sorry. Again, it's a, it's a nature habit for me. So BOD is biochemical oxygen demand. It's, it's basically an indicator of the strength of the wastewater that, that is found in the front end loadings of the facility. When I'm talking about TCAN, that's, that's nitrogen. Basically, that's a total caldol nitrogen and it's a representation of the nitrogen load on the facility. Did that answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Probably just the only thing to kind of add to your question there, Jonathan, is, is because of the fact that we currently have two, two individual plants, which one of them we're currently not using. So when you go to actually combine those two, of course, that's going to do. But the biggest thing that makes a difference is depends on what that type of business is, right? So if you look at another business like Tyson's, for example, that's going to be a, a larger BOD, you know, it's going to take up that in comparison if you're looking at something that's smaller, you know, more commercialized, it's not so much of that loading. So there, there's so many factors that go into it that make it extremely tough. But the, the, the good news is, is by doing this, then we would be set. And, you know, we definitely would have the capacity that we need for growth for quite some time.
Perfect. And, and that's the big thing is there. So we're not coming back and get this done and come back in 10 years and be like, hey, cool, let's do this again. So no, that's good that we're thinking far in the future.
Mr. Boson? Could you just outline a little bit about the other projects that you have going on besides what we're talking about here, just to address other issues around town, as long as we've got some extra time?
Yeah. So just to kind of give you guys some heads up that make this even more complicated as you're trying to do it. So just to kind of give you an example, Titus Lift Station is a project that we, we really wanted to start almost two years ago. And it, and the only reason why it hasn't started is we were kind of working on some permitting from the, the railroad, which we finally have. And now we just have to get some easements that are with some of the local, or the property owners that are close next to it. But that's one that kind of throws it into your, your scenario that a project, let's get them pushed back. One that we're going to have that be coming up this year is our Clarifier Three. That's one that when we start talking about aging infrastructure, there's four clarifiers, which we have one there that we need to get done. But unfortunately, we wanted to do last fall that it's getting pushed back till this year just because we didn't get to sign contracts, but that's one that needs to take place. We also have the, the cattle congress, lift station and sewer line that we're getting ready to do this year as well too. Same thing. We're kind of running it in some environmental that, that potentially can make that take a little bit longer than what we anticipated to kind of get through there. And like I said, we're finishing up the Highway 63 project. That's going to be getting completed this year along with the BioSalad. So just in this next, this next year, those are the, the main ones that are going to be coming up. And of course, we have a whole litmus after that, but those were, those are the ones at least ways within this next fiscal year that you'll be seeing.
You'll still be doing the slip lining and?
CIPP is something we do every single year. And even tonight, you're going to see where we have some on there that wasn't in the, the area for which we were doing, but we need to make the improvement. So yeah, those will still go on. We'll still be working with engineering through their road projects and stuff, you know, we make sure that we have funds for that. And then we also, you know, whenever there's potential growth for different projects, you know, we always try to, try to accommodate us for those as well too.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel? Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Did you have something else?
Nope, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Motion to return.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Attained.